Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Pastor Tobin Jackson of Trinity OKC Baptist Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Todd Stone. Pastor Jackson, and if everyone would please stand.
Lord Father, we thank you for this day. It's a day that you've set aside, Father, for many things, Father, but here in this place, Father, you've set aside a day, Father, to guide and lead and give wisdom, Father, to our council, to our mayor, whom we are all very thankful for, Father. We lift up this meeting, Father, to you today, that you would be honored in it, God, that we withdraw from your wisdom, God, that you would take the plans, God, that man makes here and women make here, Father, that you bless them. God, thank you for our great city. We are overwhelmed by all that has been done here, Father, and all that's been planned and all that's been carried out through the leadership here. But Father, we just pray for them. We lift them up daily. We thank you for our time, God, to come and gather like this in freedom. Father, we love you and we give you all praise and glory, Father, for this time, this meeting, this council, in Christ's name. Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jackson. Thank you, Councilman Stone. I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we are going to get started with Office of the Mayor. Do have one ceremonial presentation. Arts and Humanities Month, I will make my way to the front, and if the folks that are here for that presentation will also meet me there. Well, this is a fun one, and we do this every year, and it is always great to have this august group of arts and humanities providers here with us this morning. And to learn a little bit more about what we're doing this month, I would like to ask the clerk to please read this proclamation.
Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts, humanities, and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country. And whereas, since our earliest days, Oklahoma City has flourished because of the creative spirit and vision of our residents, we rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and our understanding of the nation and world. The arts and humanities play an important role in telling our city's story and reminding us of the truths that connect us. And whereas, the insight that comes from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. From symphonies that bring tragedy to life, to architecture that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, these works add texture to our lives and reveal the spirit of our city. And whereas cultivating the talents and minds of our young people and ensuring they have access to the arts and humanities are critical to our city's growth and prosperity. To meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingenuity of our children and grandchildren by providing equitable access to the arts and humanities and instill in them the same passion and persistence that has driven our city's progress and innovation. And whereas this month, we pay tribute to the tremendous power of the arts and humanities to bring us together and expose us to new ideas. As we carry forward this proud tradition, let us celebrate the ways our city's rich heritage has socially and economically strengthened our state and inspired our lives. Now therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 to be Arts and Humanities Month in Oklahoma City, and call upon residents to celebrate the arts and humanities in our city and encourage greater participation by all citizens in the arts and humanities in our neighborhood schools and all areas across our city.
Thank you. And to hear a little bit more, we have a couple representatives from Arts and Humanities. And first up, Allison, representing Arts Commission in this capacity. We know you here at City Council, but you are also current Chair of the Arts Commission, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Oklahoma City has gained national recognition recently for being an arts and culture destination, with the most recent recognition in the U.S. News report about being a top city for public art. Praise like this doesn't come easy, and we must credit the work that our artists, arts organizations, and city staff in the Arts and Cultural Affairs Office have done over many years to recognize the importance that arts have in our community. Not only do the arts contribute to quality of life, but as we saw during the pandemic, they also contribute to economic vitality in our city. We recognize the ability for arts and humanities to amplify important and diverse voices and messages. We reflect on the fact that as we've struggled with isolation, anxiety, and the loss of loved ones, we've turned to music, and dance, and literature, and poetry, and philosophy, and history to bring us together and help us persevere through our current moment. Thank you to the mayor and City Council for recognizing this month every year, but also for supporting our goals to the arts with funding in our annual budget and through our 1% for arts ordinance. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I'm Caroline Lowry. I'm the Executive Director for Oklahoma Humanities, here to speak on the impact and power of the humanities in this important month. Thank you to the mayor and to the City Council for this proclamation and for all the work you do, ensuring that Oklahoma City residents have access to and resources to sustain the arts and the humanities statewide. If the arts are the what, the beautiful sculpture, the amazing symphony, the beautiful master's piece you see on the wall, the humanities are the why. They provide interpretation, they provide context to inspire creative thinking, diverse perspectives, and ultimately help you engage knowledgeably in civic life, help you be a better participant in your democracy, in your city, and in your communities. So thank you for helping us celebrate October Arts and Humanities Month, and I encourage you to connect to your local cultural organizations, and it's Arts and Humanities Month, y'all. Cheers.
All right, thank you. Let's hear it for these folks. All right. That leaves us with item 3A on Office of the Mayor, which is an appointment of Amber Corbin to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. We could take a motion on that if the council so desires. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, items from council. Item 4A is an ordinance to be introduced and referred to the Planning Commission for its consideration. This amends Chapter 59 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, and it relates to the conditional use of animal raising, specifically chickens and quail. This is authored by council members Hammond, Nice, and Carter, and I do want to reemphasize, this is simply being introduced to be referred to the Planning Commission. It would still come back to the council for the typical three-meeting cycle before it would ever be adopted as an ordinance change. Which author would like to present?
Well, I'll just start, and then if Councilwoman Nice or Councilwoman Carter have anything to say. We do have Susan Randall here, who's going to provide a presentation to kind of walk through all of the conditions and kind of what this is actually changing. I will just say, I know this has been a topic before council a few times, and I think, you know, this is something that constituents of mine have come to me multiple times, from across the ward, asking about over the last few years. And particularly with the pandemic last year, I got another sort of flurry, I would say, of emails, phone calls, tags on social media, you know, asking about this issue, especially as it relates to our food supply chain and sort of the worries we had at that time about the resilience of that. So I know, you know, in many ways, this having more access to local food, whether through eggs or meat, is, to me, an issue of just local resilience and well-being for our residents. So that's what I'll say. If you all have anything you'd like to say, and then maybe we can pass it over to Susan.
I'll just add pertaining to the item of quail. Clearly, we had an issue in the community in a specific neighborhood where we had a lot of quail, way too many quail in one space. So now that we are able to define what that means, this will help us in the way for others to understand this is how we should be able to care for our neighbors while still being able to have and raise a specific quail, if that's what someone chooses to do. Thank you.
I'll just echo what you guys said already. You've stated it all. We've had plenty of calls and emails for it, so.
Susan Randall with the Municipal Counselor's Office. And the ordinance that you have before you today is to amend Chapter 59 of the Planning and Zoning Code relating to animal raising of chickens and quails. So the ordinance would enact a new use unit specifically for the raising of chickens and quails. That's where chickens and quail are fed or kept primarily for personal use, and so they are also subject to the conditions that are set forth in the ordinance. And the use is a conditional use in all zoning districts on parcels of less than one acre. So it's allowed by right as long as they meet the condition set forth in the ordinance. No permit will be required. There's no fee required. However, if you do have restrictive covenants in a neighborhood, those covenants would prevail if they prohibited the raising of chicken and quail. So the conditions that the ordinance sets forth are a limit on the number of chickens or quail, that you can have a total of six, or it could be a combination of both. No roosters are allowed, and the animals must be kept in a coop and not in a dwelling. Food and water must be available and accessible at all times, and there is no outdoor slaughter of animals. There are certain requirements for coops, spacing requirements, and size requirements. You have to have at least four square feet of space per animal. The coop has location requirements as far as five feet from the side yard setback, 10 feet from the rear property line, and it cannot be located closer than 30 feet from an adjacent dwelling. Additional coop requirements are that the animals must be kept inside the coop from dusk until dawn. Other times, they have to have access to an unpaved outdoor roaming area of at least eight square feet per animal. Coops and animals are not allowed in front of the rear wall of the primary structure. Coops have to be kept clean and built to prevent access by predators, and any type of electrical or heat source that you would use would need to comply with the city's building and electrical codes. And this is just an example of the location requirements showing that the coop has to be 10 feet from the rear, five from the side, behind the rear wall, and 30 feet from an adjacent dwelling. Enforcement would be on a complaint basis. So if someone, a neighbor complained, then they could call the city's Action Center, and we would send an inspector out to verify that the conditions are being met. In order to do that, we would have to have consent of the property owner with the alleged violation, and if they did not allow that, we would try to get consent from an adjacent property owner where we could view the violation, or if the inspector could view it in plain view. If none of this works, then there is an administrative search warrant that an inspector can get through the municipal courts. Any type of violation, if the inspector goes out and they don't meet the conditions, would be a zoning violation, and this is just our normal fines for zoning violation. A Class A is fined not to exceed $500, excluding costs and fees. For a third or subsequent offense, it would be a Class B offense, which could be a fine not to exceeding $1,200 plus costs and fees, or jail, not to exceed six months, or it could be both. The city could also file an injunction in district court in order to remove any violation. And this is just a summary of other city ordinances we looked at. We looked at several even across the country, but there were plenty that were in Oklahoma. So we looked at Edmonds, Normans, Shawnee, Stillwater, Tulsa, Fort Worth, Wichita. Every one city does different, I mean, treats animals differently. Some of them look to the size of the lot, as an Edmund does. Others just do a total number of chickens. Most of them don't allow roosters. There are a few that do. And then they all seem to have some type of different type of minimum distance between adjacent structures. So we thought that we would pick a 30 is kind of in between what Edmund does and what Norman does. And that is all. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, we do have one citizen who signed up to speak. Can I handle that?
Yeah.
Carol Kincaid.
My name is Carol Kincaid. I live at 11004 South Brookline in Ward 5, and I'd like to speak against the proposal to change the current ordinance. And I realize this is a matter of going to the Planning Commission, but I'm here to just speak my opinion on this now regarding the keeping of chickens, quail, and other poultry within the city limits. First of all, let me say, I grew up on a farm, and I know what it takes to raise chickens and have them thrive. You won't find anyone who likes chickens and other types of birds more than I do. But that said, I want to talk about the problems with having chickens or such other birds on smaller city lots than currently provided. Number one, smell. Chicken waste is very smelly and will affect neighbors. Number two, disease. Chickens can carry various diseases that can affect people or pets. Number three, rodents. Their food attracts rats and mice. Number four, predators. The existence of chickens, even in a fenced yard, will attract predators such as cats, bobcats, yes, we do have them here in the city, skunks, foxes, dogs, and coyotes. Number five, noise. Even hens, especially when distressed, make a lot of noise, which will affect neighbors. Further, what happens when the residents get tired of their chickens? Will they butcher the chickens in their backyards, or turn them loose in the neighborhoods, or try to take them to the overcrowded animal shelter? Number two, are residents who want chickens willing to give the birds the necessary warmth in the winter, cool place in the summer, proper feed, and medication as needed. Chickens and other poultry are high-maintenance animals, and further, it is difficult to determine whether a baby chick will be a hen or a rooster. Even though you ban roosters, some will undoubtedly be in the mix. What then? Call code enforcement. Code enforcement officers are overwhelmed as it is. Dealing with complaints about poultry will add to their workload because people will complain and expect something to be done. Further, I noticed in the presentation that the covenants and restrictions in the HOAs would supersede the ordinance. But that's not fair to those folks who don't live in neighborhoods with HOAs. I happen to live in a neighborhood with an HOA, and we do ban poultry. But that's not fair to those residents who don't live in HOAs and now are at the mercy of whatever their neighbors choose to do. Please vote against changing the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. What would the council wish to do with the ordinance? Got a motion and a second? And again, this is, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Since we have brought it to a vote, I would like to make a quick comment.
Please, of course.
And I appreciate Mrs. Kincaid coming down. She happens to be the president of the Neighborhood Association that I live in. She contacted me when she became aware of this and wanted to share her views and comments. As she indicated, we do have a homeowners' association, and a very effective one, and yet we've had three instances already where people have attempted to raise chickens, and it just creates problems. But Mrs. Kincaid's comment about the code enforcement is without a doubt an extremely accurate statement. Our code enforcement group are overwhelmed currently. They're not able to address all the calls that are coming in effectively to our call center now, and many times, those calls through our current system get identified as being resolved when in actuality, they haven't been resolved. And this is just going to add additional issues for them to address. I would like to think that everybody will understand these ordinances, just like we currently have in terms of high grass and all the other ordinances. The fact is, people don't comply, and it's just going to bring additional work to our already overworked code enforcement agency. So that's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, we have a motion and a second. This is to introduce the ordinance and refer it to the Planning Commission. Again, we would see it back here. This is certainly not final passage. No ordinance is changing today. Motion and a second is on the table. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. So the ordinance is now referred to the Planning Commission for its comment. All right. 4B is a resolution establishing a mayor-appointed redistricting committee to review redistricting maps to be considered by City Council and to provide public input if redistricting is required, et cetera. Councilmembers Hammond, Cooper, and Nice are the authors of this resolution.
We actually spoke earlier and decided that we'd actually like to defer this, motion to defer this resolution for consideration because we'd like to bring a additional resolution that we just weren't able to get on the agenda in time to sort of partner with it. So I'd like to make that motion now, if that's possible.
To what meeting?
November, two weeks. I don't know the date. Whatever that is, November 9th, I think.
Okay. There's a motion to defer this item till November 9. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to do a quick presentation on one of the items. Doug Dowler, our Budget Director, is going to give us a quick update on the IMSA Care Annual Renewal. So we do this every year, allow a time for people to join in or to rejoin or to exit the program. So I'll let Doug just give us a quick update on the numbers.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Doug Dowler, Budget Director, and September was our open enrollment period for IMSA Care. This is the chance we give our residents to make a change in their election. Once they make that choice, they have to stay either in or out of the IMSA Care program for the next 12 months. As we've had the last several years, we've had relatively low changes in our participation during the open enrollment month. We had about 1,500 customers who chose to come back to the program, and about 1,000 who opted to leave the program. So a net positive of about 450, so 0.2% change. So again, very small change in the number of people who are participating. We're at about 70% of our single-family residents who participate in the IMSA Care program, and that rate has been kind of gradually decreasing since we initiated the program back in '09. However, it's kind of seems to be leveling out at about 70%. If you look at the chart on the second page of the City Manager Report, you can see we're kind of leveling out here at just around 70% participation. The other piece of sort of good news is, again, Oklahoma City is a growing community. We have more residents, more customers under our utility service, and so that 70% piece of the pie is getting a little bit bigger because the pie is bigger, as it were, the number of people who are in our utility system. So it is still generating sufficient revenue to continue to support IMSA and our subsidy for IMSA. We don't anticipate a need to increase that $3.65 a month rate anytime in the near future. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have one. I'm just curious, have we ever performed a survey as to why people elect not to participate in the IMSA program?
We have not.
I'd like for us to at least consider that. It's intriguing to me. I mean, we had, at the beginning, almost a 90% participation rate, and now it's down to 70. I just find that interesting.
And Doug can speak to this because he's been involved with it the whole time, but I know initially, everyone got enrolled as we started, and so you're just like automatically enrolled. And then we started doing the renewals. And as we started doing the renewals, some people make decisions based on the insurance coverage that they already have. There's various reasons why they might choose that, and that's where we saw it fall off for several years. We got to about 70%, and then landed at kind of that 70% is where we've stayed since then. But as far as just the reasoning, I don't know in any of the inquiries or interactions if we get any kind of feedback on the reasoning.
Well, when we do our annual survey of citizens, could we somehow maybe incorporate a question pertaining to IMSA?
We could look at that, or we might even do that as a separate thing.
Okay.
We've worked with IMSA quite a bit on this program. They've helped us with a lot of the marketing and different things of the program.
Yeah.
And so I think it'd be useful for both IMSA and the city to conduct that. I think that might be a better forum to do that than our resident survey, but we'll work on that.
All right. Thank you. I mean, we may have additional presentations. I think it's a great program, and I would encourage people to sign up for that service.
Okay, thank you. The only other two items that I have on City Manager Reports are the sales tax report for October and the interim financial report for the first quarter. So just a couple of comments on those. Interim financial report, as you've seen, our revenues continue to grow and be very strong. Right now, we're showing about a $12 million gap with revenues over expenditures where you want to be. It's more than what we would have expected. Revenues have been so far above budget with sales tax and use tax being so strong. And then we're also on our expenditures. There are a lot of factors, areas where we'll have expenditures that happen later in the year. But two of the biggest really are the number of vacancies we've got right now. We've got so many vacant positions that it's creating salary savings. And then we don't have any of the, we haven't settled, I mean, we just settled IFF contract. We haven't settled FOP or ASME. So none of the pay increases are incorporated. Even with IFF being approved last week, it wasn't in that first quarter, so that's not reflected here. But a very strong position to be in to start the year. To note, the sales tax report for October, which would be the beginning of the next quarter, still another very strong month, 17% growth in sales tax. If you think back to, I don't know when normal was, you know, given COVID, think back to what normal was, but for the longest time, normal was really about a 3% to 3.25% growth every year for sales tax. You know, we'd have some years higher, some years lower, but it settled around that 3% range. And so you can see, this is just way out of bounds from where we normally have it, in a very positive direction. Still very strong, something we're going to continue to monitor and report and work with the council on that as we go forward. So very, very strong sales tax again for this month. I'd be happy to take any questions. And that's all that I have.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We could take items A and B with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item seven is request for uncontested continuances. The City Manager has already informed me that these two items are the only ones he has. The City Manager has already informed me that these two items are the only ones he has today. And these are deferrals of Items 11 MA and 11 NA to November 9th. Item eight, revocable permits and events. We have Item 8A is a revocable permit with the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Foundation, Inc., Doing Businesses Susan G. Komen for More Than Pink 2021 on October 30th. And we do have someone who has signed up to speak on this item, Alyssa Pope.
Good morning. We're coming before you all. This has been one of the hardest things for us to do the last past couple of years. Susan G. Komen or More Than Pink Walk, of course, because of COVID. We were not able to come together and celebrate with thousands and thousands of our participants and survivors. But this year, we wanted to do something for our survivors, for our communities, to let them know that they haven't been left behind during COVID. So instead of us doing our walk, we want to do our Survivor Car Parade out at Bassett and Tenille Park. And we have about 50 survivors and families that have already registered and are going to come out for the parade and kind of keep it socially distanced still during COVID because we do have to be aware of their immunocompromised system at the time. So, but like I said, we just wanted to be able to celebrate our survivors, let them know that they haven't been forgotten during this time and that we are still here and we're still raising money and we're still helping our community during this time.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah, well, I always remember back to, I actually participated in this when I was in college with the golf team that I was on. We did it as a fun outing opportunity. So we came into the city and participated. So I'm very happy that y'all are back at it, and I will move for approval.
I just wanted to ask what time the parade was. That's the only thing I didn't know. What time is the parade?
The parade starts at 9:30.
Thank you.
So we still have our virtual ceremony that we do with telling everyone to walk where they are. And then the Survivor Parade starts at 9:30.
Great. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
8B, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Arts Council of Oklahoma City to Hold the Opening Night Finale 5K on New Year's Eve. And we do have Peter DeLeese still here and Alyssa Fletcher.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought I'd bring a poster, leave it with you for opening night. We're pretty excited about the colorful posters that we were able to put up together this year. 36th Annual Opening Night. And last year, just FYI, we wanted to do it in the Chickasaw-Bricktown Ballpark. But of course, because of the pandemic, we decided to go virtual with it. And so we did the event completely for free and had a five-hour-long online presentation for the event. So we're really excited that this year, we actually get to have it in the Chickasaw-Bricktown Ballpark. We moved it over there from this central area where it was for several years, mainly once again because of the pandemic. But it's giving us an opportunity to explore Bricktown in a new way. It's been many, many years since the event has been in Bricktown. And so we're really kind of excited about that. Fireworks display will be there. It'll just be a wonderful event. And we couldn't do this without the incredible support of all the different departments within the City of Oklahoma City. And Mr. Friedman, we really want to thank you for how much all these various departments reach out and help us in every way they can. It's just very, very special, the relationship that we get to have with the city, and we really, really appreciate that. And I'd like to introduce Alyssa Fletcher, just to tell you a little bit about some of the acts.
Yeah, so like Peter mentioned, we are holding it in the Chickasaw-Bricktown Ballpark this year. It's New Year's Eve event, 7:00 PM to midnight, with a 5K taking place that day at 3:00 PM. We'll have food trucks and mural projects just outside the ballpark up on their grounds. Once you get inside the ballpark, there are children's art activities in the batting cages. There is a live interactive mural, a 12-foot by 8-foot interactive mural on the concourse, and lots of live entertainment to include our finale band, which is Adam and Kizzy, playing on the second bassline this year. Our fireworks display will take place just as the clock strikes midnight. And we're just, we're excited to host a family-friendly, safe event to reign in 2022.
Alyssa is our new opening night director. And I think Kendall is here. Kendall Bleakley is one of the volunteer co-chairmen. And she's going to be presenting on another item before you, but it was just serendipitous that she was actually here this morning. Pretty excited. So she's representing all of our volunteer community.
Peter, in the past, when you have it downtown, you have musical events occurring simultaneously. Will that occur over there? Will the music compete with each other?
Well, we've actually, we're going to utilize every aspect of the Chickasaw-Bricktown Ballpark. So there will be some indoor venues and some outdoor venues, some venues along the concourse. The mural project that Alyssa was referring to will be up on the concourse. Kids will be able to interact with that. The spacing is such that you get some noise bleed, but it's really less than you might anticipate. And the opportunity to have everyone socially distanced, actually, in the crowded areas and have the seating areas open. We're actually building a stage on the second bassline, so the main finale stage will be out in the field. And we're pretty excited about how it's going to work. We haven't actually got a chance to see this in action because last year, we wanted to, but of course, had to change things up. And literally, that decision was made about four weeks before the event. So it was, it was a tough turnaround. But we're really excited to try it out and see what it's like. And I think Bricktown's really embracing the idea of having it over there. We may, at some point, stretch the event out like it used to be back in the old days. The modern streetcar really allows for that to happen now because you can just pop on the streetcar and go to different parts of downtown. So we're exploring all those options.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Nice, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. First of all, I know we're all excited, especially, I'm more excited because it is in Bricktown, for the area of Bricktown. And also, last year, The Thunder did the Fresh Paint Series right in front of the ballpark for folks in our city to be able to observe our young talent in our community. So this is going to add to that, I'm pretty sure.
We're doing that again this year. Thank you so much for bringing that up.
Thank you. So with that, especially with Adam and Kizzy, I must say, I know they're excited to come back, to come back home because they did move away in order to pursue their dreams. But they are always close to home. So I'm excited that they are going to be a part of this ceremony and just this finale celebration for the year that we have had. So I think it's worth celebrating, obviously, that we made it this far. So we're going to do that together. So with that, I'll move for approval.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to it. 8C, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to Hold the Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival on November 18th, Mickey Mantle Drive between Flaming Lips and Wanda Jackson. And Holly Hoiler is here.
Good morning. I'm Holly Hoiler with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership. Downtown Oklahoma City will host the 20th Annual OKC Tree Lighting Festival on Thursday, November 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on Mickey Mantle Drive between the Chickasaw-Bricktown Ballpark and the Canal Overlook. The event serves as the official kickoff to the holiday season and to downtown in December as the mayor lights the Christmas tree with Santa Claus. The festival is free and open to everyone, and it features a showcase of talented and diverse performances as well as free family-friendly activities for all of the attendees. The stage will be positioned on Mickey Mantle Drive outside of Brickopolis. So we will close Mickey Mantle Drive from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM the day of the event. I'd also like to note that we've moved the event up one week. This is to accommodate for the various holiday events and attractions, including one of our events that take place earlier in the season, so that it will remain the true kickoff to downtown in December. We will also have a virtual version of the festival for those who want to continue tradition and see the tree lighting the day after Thanksgiving. Again, we're excited to celebrate the 20th anniversary of this event and downtown in December, and we hope you all will join us.
Thank you. I've worked closely with Holly and the team there for the last several years and obviously through various transitions. And it's a great event. You guys are doing a terrific job. Thank you. Councilwoman Nice?
I agree. It is definitely a great event, and diverse is defined as diverse. So I think that's the best part of what this brings for our community and for our city. So with that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll see you there. Thanks. Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Where we have Items A through F, we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Mark, you would like to, how would you like to vote?
I'd like to approve it for someone to come up on the screen. Thank you.
I'd like to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All we have is claims and payroll, but we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OC PPA, reconvene as the council meeting, where we find ourselves at Item 9, the Consent Docket. We have presentations scheduled for Items O and P and Item AY. And that's it. Is there anything else a council member would like to pull out for individual discussion or a separate vote?
Mayor, can we have AQ?
AQ. Okay. All right, anything else? Hearing none, we'll take them in order. So that'll bring us to O and P, which I believe are kind of a joint presentation.
Yes, Donna Servantes is here with the Planning Department. Just to give a quick overview, this is the first items we're seeing on the renewal of the Uptown 23rd District. I appreciate Donna's work with all these community partners because it's so important for these various districts. So I'll just let her give a quick intro. You know, when we see these items come through, Western Avenue Bid is going to be on the individual consideration. There's several times we'll see these items come through just to check all the boxes to make sure we get this set forward appropriately. And so I'll just let Donna give a few comments on Uptown 23rd.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And yes, this is the third year that Uptown Bid is seeking renewal of their bid services. The services provided include maintenance, administration, promotions, and cleaning, as well as security. These services have been all the more important this past year. Of course, the district is, as many of our districts face challenges with, you know, restaurants being closed and the Tower Theater being closed for some time. But I'm pleased to report how hard the district has worked to remain viable, to remain open, to use the funds that are available to provide these services, keep the area clean, safe, and welcoming, and keep it a vibrant area for our city. They have worked hard together on another project. Many of the stakeholders working toward a streetscape enhancement that is underway and the project being pushed forward. So it's just a matter of the property owners, the business owners, many from the community working for the betterment of this district. So we're pleased to support this proposal, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
I'll recognize Kendall, since she's here. She's been, has stepped up, Kendall Bleakley, as the interim director and has been doing a fantastic job. We appreciate those services. So thank you.
Thank you.
And then Item AQ, Councilman Carter?
Yes, sir. I just had a couple of questions on it. Just wanted an explanation kind of what it is and what we're going to be doing, especially with rising costs. I'm kind of curious as to how we're going to be able to do it for 200 grand.
Go ahead. Eric?
Eric Quanger, Public Works Director. Councilman Carter, happy to answer the questions on Item AQ. This is a funding allocation that council is considering today to authorize $200,000 to be spent on Northwest Expressway. If you look in the background of your memo, the city is in agreement with ODOT to make a transfer of a portion of Northwest Expressway. This is generally going to be from State Highway 74 to just east of the Kilpatrick Turnpike. ODOT, as a part of that agreement, did the street resurfacing. They've also upgraded the traffic signals. One of the items that we identified after the work was complete, though, was that some of the drainage inlets had not been fully raised, and so it provided for an unsmoothed driving surface. This money, if allocated today by the council, will allow the city to go and raise those inlets up just to finish that project. The transfer has not officially occurred. It's something that we're expecting in the next couple of months. But this is just that next step to complete that project.
Okay, so we're not doing anything really with the roads?
I'm sorry.
We're not having to do anything with the roads? We're just messing with the drains?
Just with the drainage inlets that are just right in front of some of the curbs. So the roadwork is all complete. So if anyone has driven Northwest Expressway this year, you'll see that it's been fully resurfaced, restripped, and all the signals have already been upgraded with new radar control.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Item 9AY. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust.
And we've got a presentation. Anita Bridges is here with the, she's a developing partner on the Harmony Project. And this was an allocation that previously approved by the city council. This is adding $100,000 to this initial allocation. Anita?
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm here on behalf of the development team for the Marcus Garvey Harmony Senior Family Project in Ward 7. And it's been over 18 months, I guess, since I was here last making a request for funding, and you all approved $1 million for us. And that was fantastic. We appreciate that. And now we're here back again with our, with our hands out. A lot has happened over the last 18 months. And we are, of course, not, we are, of course, part of the, part of the result of what has happened in the construction industry. As you all probably know, material costs have gone up significantly. When we were here 18 months ago, we had our project budget, budget of $9.1 million. And that same project today is now 10.0, almost $7 million. We've been, we've been able to get funding from several sources in recognition of the fact that material costs have gone up, and that's been helpful. So I think that with the home funds that we are receiving, the additional tax credit funds that we've received, we are able to meet the shortfall as a result of the, as a result of the material cost. However, one of the things that we were, and let me, let me do this before I get into the meat of what I'm going to talk about today. Just to bring you up to date on our project, we are a project located on between 24th and 26th Street, between Jordan and, and darn, what is that? And it's half of the block. It's right on the corner of 24th and Jordan, between Jordan and Prospect, Prospect to the West. So what we're doing is creating, we are rehabbing the, what was the old Marcus Garvey Leadership School on the corner. We're going to rehab that and turn that into a 20-apartment senior family building. In addition to that, we're building 20 more townhomes, two- and three-bedroom townhomes, so we'll have 40 units altogether. We also are going to build a community center, which will be a gathering place for the neighborhood and for the residents of the complex as well. This, this is the old, the old Harmony Building, when it was built in 1932. It's going to look different. What you're seeing now is not the new building, it's the community building. The community building, which will, will have innovation or space in there for building. The community building, which will, will have innovation or space in there for, for, for incubators. We're going to have, we're thinking of having a podcast room, a conference room, and different facilities, not only for the community to come into, but also for the residents as well. Additionally, we're going to build the, as I said, 20 town homes, two and three bedroom town homes, which will look like what you're seeing on your screen, or something very close to that. Getting down to the weeds now, as I said, this was once a $9.1 million project. It is now a 10 point, over $10.6 million project. And what we have come to realize, in addition to the increased construction costs, is that there is a need for backup generators. The, the problems that occurred earlier this year during the winter months in which electricity, all power was out, has had a terrible toll on seniors. And we were made aware of that by Councilwoman Nice when we visited with her about the project. And there were a lot of devastating and dangerous situations that our seniors were put into. And in order to prevent that from happening in the future, what we are planning to do is add generators to all the residential units. All the residential units will have generation, or backup generation. We hadn't budgeted for that. This is something new. Those, those generators are going to cost upwards of $280,000. We are able to come up with some of that, but what we're here today asking for is 10, I'm sorry, $100,000 of that $280,000 to help us keep our seniors safe. We're getting, as I said earlier, we are receiving additional tax credits for, I'm OFA. We're receiving additional tax credits from the historical senior, the state historical society, as well as the national historic tax credits. And we've also are receiving $500,000 in home funds. That, in addition to our deferred developer fee, takes care of the, the brunt of, of the generation costs, generator costs. But we're here today asking for an additional $100,000 so that we can make sure that all of our seniors are safe. Do you have any questions?
No questions?
Go ahead. I was going to say, I'll make a couple of comments. As, as we look at the things that have taken place, especially in the realm of our communities, and the phone calls that I received last October pertaining to all of us probably with power outages, but one specific development that was a school that was redeveloped for seniors did not have backup generation, and I had seniors stuck that did not want to leave because that was their home. And they stayed there and waited out this ice storm until their electricity came back on, some in the upper days of almost two weeks. And if there's a way for us to prevent that from happening in our communities with the new development, those are the things that I believe that we are tasked to do to ensure safety of our residents, especially those who want to live their sunset in, in a specific area, community, or place that they call home. And with this type of generation, to be able to assist those residents, this is one of those steps as far as helping to better some of the infrastructure needs that we have, which we all talked about as well over this past year, the infrastructure concerns across our city, but clearly in specific areas that have not had that attention that other areas have pertaining to sewage drainage and/or electricity lines and, and how people receive their power. So again, this, this is one of those conversations where we hope that this can be a normal conversation in the future for anyone who wants to be able to develop in, in areas, not just specific areas, but all across the city, that we're able to, again, take care of our residents. And again, they can be comfortable in, in the space that they choose to say that they live in. This particular school, clearly, as you see, has history from the 1930s with it being built and it having proximity to Northeast 23rd Street, where we are working through a lot of new things that are coming online pertaining to Maps4 projects. So this is a place now where I know a lot of seniors are waiting and have asked me, when is new senior housing coming? So now we can tell them new senior housing is coming, and it's going to be with security of you not having to leave if something should happen. And the comment was, was made to me in a meeting that, well, this is, this may not happen again. We don't know that. We, we can't say for certain that this will not happen again. We didn't think what happened in October would happen the way it did, and then February came. And then we had the, the terrible storms that we had just a few weeks ago in our, our city. So we have to prepare for these types of, of, of concerns for our community, and this is the way to do that. And clearly, it took a lot of credits, tax credits, home funds, and fees to do that, but that's how you use private-public partnerships. And that's, that's really all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nice.
So there will be one more item that will come forward. It will go to, the Economic Development Agreement will go to the Economic Development Trust, so we'll finalize that. It'll finalize the details. This allows for the allocation. A million dollars is already approved. This adds $100,000 to the allocation. After Economic Development Trust approves the EDA, it will come back to the council as a concurrence item. So you'll see it one more time on the council as a concurrence item, but this will move the project forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
May I ask, it's a follow-up question to when this item first appeared before us. I inquired about, in terms of the space itself, what the project might do in terms of better informing the public of who Marcus Garvey is and his contributions to, you know, what will eventually become the Black is Beautiful Movement, right, in the late 60s and 70s, but he's already kind of heading us in that direction during a very tumultuous time 100 years ago, right? I'm just wondering, do we have any updates on that, or where we're heading with that?
I recall you saying that. I'd not forgotten, Councilman. We plan to do that. In fact, in the downstairs area, which, in the hallways and things, there were, until they were vandalized, there were, as many schools have, the display cabinets and cases. What we plan to do in there, and to be perfectly honest, we haven't gotten into the details of exactly where that's going to be and how it's going to be. When you were talking about it before, I had in my mind that we could use those cases to show the history of, of Marcus Garvey, show the history of the school itself. It started out as Harmony in 1932, became Martin Luther King at one point in time, and, and then the last known thing was Marcus Garvey Leadership Academy. So, so we plan to do that. That, that's very true. I've, I, I plan to get in touch with the gentleman who ran the school, who I believe is still here in the city, and who can offer a lot of information and historical perspective to that as well. So that is not forgotten. It's part of our plan. We just have, we're just so far out from that. We haven't put a lot of attention to it at this point in time. But it, but it's on the radar. It will be included, and I can guarantee that.
Well, I appreciate that, especially because when I was just looking up the site on a map, Google is still calling it Martin Luther King School, which reminds me of how too often there seems to be like, well, I know Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King and, and maybe Malcolm X, and then everybody else who's black, whoever contributed anything, just gets lost in that. And I, I just don't want us to miss this opportunity, so I'm really happy to hear you all still keeping that on your radar. And then when I'm also looking at that map, I see the proximity to Florence is this nationally recognized restaurant.
Yes.
And then as Councilwoman Nice is pointing out, right across the street, the market at East Point, I just see this as an opportunity to call attention in a public way.
It, it's our intent to be a, a part of the community and to maintain the historical significance and the heritage of that, of the community, as well as obviously the namesake of the school, and now the development.
Thank you so much.
All right. You're most welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that concludes our items that we had.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Could we look real quickly at AJ, and could we maybe put that rendering of the new Almonte Library up on the screen? While we're figuring out whether or not we can do that. One, it, it looks very nice, but secondly, that's a, an important story that I think we shouldn't forget about. So when the Metropolitan Library wanted to renovate the Southern Oaks Library on South Walker, it didn't want to completely close off access to the books and everything that the library had. So they went out to try to find space that they could rent during the, yeah, thank you, Amy, thank you, the renovation timeframe. And we did that about in 11, 12, something like that, because I just transitioned off the Library Commission over here to the council. And it was such a great response in terms of the number of new members, the number of new library cards that were issued from the immediate neighborhood that they, you know, once they completed the renovations, they wanted to retain this, and we've been leasing space ever since that time. I think that's something we need to consider moving forward, working with the Metropolitan Library system, as well as the Cleveland County Library, because they've done a great job with the Southwest Library. But anyway, looking at finding areas in the city that we may or may not be too sure would support a library and leasing space, and then once it's determined, hey, this is a good area, the community's responding greatly, let's then begin looking at a permanent site for a library system. So it just turned out terrific in terms of how this has played out. And for this library, probably more so than any other library, what we found was that the whole family would go there to visit the library. You know, it was, the children needed to access a book or do something, but many times, they may be limited to just one vehicle for the whole family, so the whole family would accompany them, and it, it's just a great story. We need to get someone from the Metropolitan Library system to share the story, much better than what I can.
Yeah, because that one was, didn't, we just kind of accidentally happened on this one, where, didn't we, didn't we open this one up as one of the other ones was being renovated in the south side?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Southern Oaks.
There was Southern Oaks, yeah. So it was like, so it was just really an accident, and then when you realize this, it, it opened up an opportunity for people who weren't going to Southern Oaks to come to this one, and so it opened up a new area.
Yeah. No, no, I think it's, I think we can use it as an example moving forward and identify areas throughout the city that currently doesn't have a, a library close by, and see if we could just lease space, see how the community responds. And then if it responds favorably, we might even look at the, the smallest library within the system. It's the one in Stockyards, I forgot its name. Look to see if that may, how that community would respond to enhancing and enlarging the services there. But there's several other areas throughout the city that I think we need to work closely with the Metropolitan Library system. And every 10 years, as we do another GO bond, consider that as part of the total bond package. Thank you.
To his point, what does that process look like? Because I've, I've had neighbors in the Spencer area, like far northeast part of our ward, asking for a library and access to a library.
So really, the Metropolitan Library system actually guides that. They do their own strategic planning, and they're looking at areas where they need libraries. And when we get ready to do a bond issue, we always coordinate with them and work with them to look at their master plan and their strategic plan of where they're going to grow, grow and where they need libraries and need the services. And so it's, it's really working through the Metropolitan Library system.
Well, I, I know they, there has been concern and asks for that, so if there's a way for us as a council as a whole to support some of those efforts, I think that would really help to put some traction behind us, to his point, being able to get bigger libraries in some of those smaller areas and focus on some of those areas that, that clearly have desired to have access to the library.
Well, we're responsible for the cost of the facility and the nice staff and support, you know, the ongoing cost, but we have to come up with the cost for the facility. Anyway, great story. It, it should get a little bit more attention, so maybe Christie or somebody could promote the history behind that particular library.
All right. Well, that concludes anything that anybody pulled out on the consent docket, so we could take a motion for its adoption. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Item 10, concurrence docket. We have items A through H we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 1725 South Frisco Road going from AA to PUD 1833. Councilwoman Young, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, it was recommended by Planning, and with no protests, I will make a motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 2804 East Memorial Road going from AA and R1 to PUD 1837. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. This is to permit a mixed-use single-family and commercial development, and this area is located right in front of the university, Oklahoma Christian. Okay. So with that, I will move for approval.
We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 12200 North MacArthur Boulevard going from PUD 817 to PUD 1844. Councilwoman Stone Cypher, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a rezone to correct some issues involving a commercial development at 122nd and North MacArthur Boulevard. Planning Commission recommended approval. There are no protests, so at this time, I'll move for approval, please.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11D, one and two are related. Looks like we'll need two votes on this. D1 is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 5201 East Hefner Road going from AA and PUD 1154 to PUD 1845. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay. Again, this is for industrial development, and it seems no one protested this, and I will move for approval for D1.
All right. We've got a motion and a second for item 11D1. Cast your votes. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And D2 is easement be accepted? Councilwoman Nice.
Make a motion to accept the easement.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 3311 Southwest 59th going from PUD 562 with AE2 overlay to SPOD 1346. And Councilwoman Young, the applicant, Matthew Smith, has signed up to speak.
Okay, well, we'll hear from the applicant then.
Matthew Smith, 2901 Gate Street, Fort Worth. Really just here to answer any questions. We work closely with Commissioner Cravens and Commissioner Coffey, as well as airports, engineering, ODOT, everything to make sure that the site plan lays out correctly, access is where it needs to be, and the flow of traffic, everything. All the questions were answered. Work on the navigation easement with the airports, of course, and just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. If there are no questions from council, make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11F, this is an ordinance on final hearing. This was the third of three meetings related to this potential ordinance change. You may recall, two meetings ago, this was presented, then there was a public hearing. This relates to obstructing officers, and today is potential final passage. If there's no comments or questions, the council could make a motion.
I do have a few comments I'd like to make, just to probably explain my decision on this. In general, I struggle with any law that, and in general, how our criminal legal system handles harm that is done, interpersonal harm, so, which I would define, you know, making threats or intimidation or harming someone in the course of their duties, especially pertaining to code enforcement, harm that is done to them. However, our system right now has no avenue to actually repair that harm, like nothing about this actually makes, helps that code enforcement staff member feel safer. It doesn't do anything to have actual accountability between the person who expressed a threat or intimidation to that code enforcement officer. It's just punishment. So I'm going to vote no on this, not because I don't respect the work that our code enforcement department does. There's, you know, every department, every human endeavor has, has things that I struggle with that are not perfect, but, but, you know, I do respect the work that they do. I recognize that can be probably a very difficult job a lot of the time, but I, I just don't think that this actually solves any of the problems that, that, that lead to someone wanting to express a threat or intimidate or, or try to harm a code enforcement staff member, so that's, I'll be voting no on this for that reason. I just wanted to express that, because I, I don't want that to be interpreted as, that I don't respect the work they do or care about their well-being. I just don't think this actually solves any of those problems, so that's all I want to say. Thank you.
And then I would just echo those comments, and I'm particularly interested, having just received a preliminary report on the Human Rights Commission and what it will be able to tackle in its purview, I, what I know of that process is the one that I'm much more interested in when it comes to resolving these sorts of disputes and matters, so I'll also be joining a no vote there, so thank you.
Is there, is there some, something we can do or look at as far as, to the point of, of what we just heard, to ensure that we're working on behalf of, of those, of both, on both sides, should I say, more so than anything, especially with our code enforcement officers, for them to have that extra layer of protection that they need? And it sounds like we probably need to have more conversations with them to understand what that looks like for them, for them to understand that, that we want and see their, their protection as, as a priority, not just by name, as an officer.
I mean, right now, I feel like, you know, what we're taking, and Oral can speak to this, with being able to have a penalty that's there, is from our side, something that we can do to try to address that. Clearly, with our officers, we work with them to try to make sure that they have protocol and procedures to try to protect them as much as we can, and, and ways that they respond if there's an issue that's there from an operational standpoint, from a legal standpoint, I, I don't know that there's much more that we could do besides what we have in here right now.
There is a one-minute difference between when a person threatens to strike a city code enforcement official and when that person strikes the city code enforcement official. When the threat is made under this ordinance amendment, the code enforcement officials would have the same protection that a police officer would have had to remove that person from that situation before they get to the point of actually committing violence. So as, as an operational issue, having a, what we call Iwop ordinance in place to benefit code enforcement officials will allow police officers to remove someone from a situation before they actually cause damage or injury to the person that's trying to do his job for the city.
I, I mean, I understand that. I don't think it does actually accomplish overall the goal of protection, because the threat has already been made. That's a harm in itself, like, I've been threatened, both in person and online, and it's scary. It feels scary. I, sometimes I, when I have a thousand notifications on my phone, I feel a sense of stress, my heart rate goes up. That, that was, that's harm that is done to me on, maybe it's a smaller level, but I would think that things that could help actually prevent those kinds of threats, because my assumption is those things are happening when you're either in a neighborhood, working with a resident to try to get them into compliance, and they are frustrated, as I hear a lot of people can be with code enfor, I can understand that sense of frustration. I would think having more proactive resources to help our residents come into compliance on certain things, actually having some kind of restorative process, not just a fine or jail time, to address that kind of behavior that they engaged in, to make that threat. I recognize that this functionally just helps you remove them from the situation, but it's not preventing or repairing any of the harm that is happening, potentially happening to that person. I think this is a larger issue for me that just touches on the deficiencies of our criminal legal system to actually hold people accountable instead of just punishing them, which is what the whole system is currently set up to do. So I think it is a longer conversation with our municipal courts, with, with the city in general about providing resources for people so they don't get to the point where they're interacting with a city staff member and get to that point of wanting to make a threat or, or cause some kind of bodily harm. So yes, I understand what this will do. I don't agree that it actually is addressing any of the underlying issues that lead people to engage in this kind of behavior.
And please understand that from the point in time when this ordinance would come into effect, there's already been a neighborhood complaint. There's been a neighbor that refuses to comply with city ordinances regarding maintaining their property in such a way that it becomes harm to the entire neighborhood. That same person then is given an opportunity to come to a hearing and explain how what they're doing isn't harming the neighborhood or isn't a violation of the ordinance. After that entire process is completed, then the director would issue an order allowing a contractor to come and take care of the problem, be it mow the grass or remove the piles of junk that have allowed rat harbage or whatever. And at that moment, that landowner still may be resisting, still may be preventing the job from being done, so we're at an impasse where somebody has to have the greater authority, and in this case, this Iwop ordinance allows the police department to remove that person from the scene long enough for us to complete the work, and they will have a ticket, which may or may not be dismissed or declined, or whatever a judge wants to do with it. The Iwop tickets are frequently written, and they are often declined, because after a while, that issue becomes moot, and that's what we try to, we achieve, and that's what we strive for in a prosecution office whenever these tickets come in, is to evaluate whether there is still a further need to make an example, and usually there is not. So if you look at the decline rates, 30-58 is fairly high.
I don't need to have it explained. I understand, it's a fundamental disagreement in what actually prevents that harm, and, and I would be interested in looking at maybe some of that data of where these, these incidents are happening, but there are a myriad of reasons why someone might not be coming into compliance. Some of that might be poverty, some of that might be time available to do something, and, and I think addressing those underlying issues, get to the point, I understand what's happening, I don't need it explained to me, but I'm saying it's a fundamental disagreement in the way that I don't want to create more opportunity for particularly poor people to get caught in our criminal legal system. I recognize our municipal courts does an amazing job of working with folks. I'm just saying, this doesn't actually prevent the harms that are happening or repair them, and I'm, that's what I'm interested in in the long run, so that's, I just wanted to explain myself, to make sure that I am communicating to our code enforcement folks that this isn't about lack of respect or care for what they do and what, how difficult it can be. I think there are other solutions to achieve prevention of these kinds of interactions.
So if I could just real quickly say something, you know, our, our code enforcement folks, they get beat on a lot. I don't mean physically beat on a lot, but when, when they go out to these calls, when they go out to address these complaints, you know, the majority of the time, the people don't want to see them there. The job that we ask them to do and we implore them to do is critical to our neighborhoods. I'm not saying this is a fix-all, but we, we definitely need to do everything we can to make sure that we're protecting our employees while they're doing the duties that we're requesting they go do, because we want to save our neighborhoods.
So investing more in strong neighborhood initiatives, investing more in resources for people to keep up their properties, I'd love to propose all those sorts of things, and I constantly hear back, we don't have the budget, we don't have the budget. Those are the sorts of things that I think could be put into place that could actually help our code enforcement staff to not even have to get to the point where they're having to make these sorts of, because I think, I see this happen in strong neighborhood initiative neighbor, or neighborhoods, areas, where they organize to go do cleanups, to help neighbors build fences so their dogs aren't getting loose. Those, that kind of, but that takes resources to do, and that is something that as a system, as a whole, as a country, we are not, we, it's easier to vote and say I protected people than doing the work of investing and organizing neighbors to take care of one another and look out for one another and help them keep their properties, their yards, whatever it is up. So again, trying, I didn't mean to make this into like a whole thing, I just wanted to explain that my philosophy of no new fines, no new crimes, that these things do nothing to repair. It's easy to, to vote and say I did something that, that helps protect safety, when, safety for who is always the question.
For our employees.
Again.
Additional safety for our.
Again, we can invest in things that actually prevent those staff having to go and intervene in, in these situations, so. And, and we historically have not done that, so I'm, that's what I'm saying. I don't need to argue about it.
Yeah, we agree. I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to raise an argument at all. What I'm saying is, I think it's a good step that helps to protect our employees, that, let's face it, they are put in tough situations on a daily basis at our request to protect our neighborhoods. You know, when we see the pictures of some of the issues that code enforcement goes out there and faces, I mean, most of those pictures aren't like, oh, you needed to mow the other half of your front yard. It's stuff imploding on itself, that we have to address, I mean, for the neighbor. So anyway, that's the reason I'm voting for it, and I appreciate the job they do.
All right, any other comments or questions? We've got a motion and a second on the table for adoption. Cast your votes. Passes six to three. All right, item 11G, 1 and 2 are related, as is 11H, and this all relates to the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. Item G1 is a public hearing regarding the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. The only person who has signed up to speak is just making herself available for questions, and that is Kendall Bleakley, who's been name-checked several times in this meeting already. And Kendall, you're welcome to speak, but you also don't have to, you're just available for questions.
Yeah, I'm just available for questions, Kendall Bleakley, 3408 Northwestern.
Okay, thank you, Kendall. No one else has signed up to speak on this item, so we'll close the public hearing, and that finds us at G2, Resolution Adopting and Confirming an Assessment Role for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. And there's no presentation, so if, if there's no comments, we could take a motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11H is again related to this. This is the ordinance on final hearing, adopting and setting the assessment role for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Kendall. Okay, 11I, this is a public hearing regarding the ordinance introduced last meeting, presented at that time regarding stormwater drainage program. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
All right, so we will close the public hearing, and that is scheduled for potential final consideration at our next meeting. 11J, this is approval of amendment number seven to the amended and restated trust indenture creating the Emergency Medical Services Authority as beneficiary of the trust, extending the 2021 window of opportunity for six months until April 1st, 2022, et cetera. I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Wiley Williams, Deputy Municipal Counselor, is here to speak to this item. Wiley is a deputy municipal counsel for the city. He's also a representative appointed by the city on the Emsa Trust, and right now serves as the chairman of the Emsa Trust, so he's going to just introduce this item and explain what we're asking the council to do here.
Good morning. The first item on the Agenda J is an opportunity to extend the window of opportunity. The trust indenture that was adopted for the Emergency Medical Services Authority provides in Article Four that every five years, either beneficiary city, Tulsa or Oklahoma City, have the opportunity to withdraw from the system, and that starts a long process of different steps you have to go through to accomplish that. And the city manager had asked for an extension of that window for this year, and to do that, we had to adopt a trust amendment to the trust indenture, and the, the trust did that at their last meeting, and we're now presenting it to the two cities for adoption. You have to accept beneficial interest in the amended trust that extended the window of opportunity for 2001, and that would be that action.
This will give us additional time to be able to assess the situation. Currently, with the situation that we have with Emsa right now, and really, it's a national situation, we'll talk about here in a minute, with the difficulty in hiring paramedics and some of the challenges that are there, that our option right now in evaluating this window of opportunity would be to pull out of the Emsa Trust, which would mean we're providing the services ourself. If we just took that over right now in this certain situation, in this environment, we would just adopt the problems that are existing already and the difficulty in hiring, hiring paramedics. And so for us, we felt like in agreement, talking with Emsa and with Tulsa, that it was really better to extend that window of opportunity so that we can work on these issues to try to address them going forward and be in a better position to be able to evaluate where Emsa is and where we are with the ambulance service going forward. So we're asking for the extension of six months onto the window of opportunity at, to. give us more time to evaluate the situation and Emsa more time to work on the situation.
Any questions for Wiley?
Just a comment. I think Emsa's performing extremely well, given the circumstances they're having to deal with, and I'd be prepared to extend for another five years, but I'm also willing to keep this window open for six months. I just wanted to mention that I think everyone associated with Emsa is doing a very good job, and I commend everybody involved with that organization. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no comments or questions, we could take a motion to approve amendment number seven, item J. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11K. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on November 9th, final hearing on November 23rd. This amends Chapter Six of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code titled "Ambulance Code." And there's a presentation here as well.
Yes, so Wiley's going to just introduce this really quickly, and then we have a couple of speakers that will just present the concept that's being put before us. This is in line with what we're talking about with some of the challenges that Emsa is facing and another way that we can help in changing the way that we're doing our ambulance service that allows us to be able to deal with the issues that we have in front of us right now. Wiley?
Yes. Our trust approved recommending this ordinance change to the cities of Tulsa and Oklahoma City, and both cities are required to have kind of, their ambulance ordinance have to model each other. And so it's being presented in Tulsa and in Oklahoma City. Essentially, what it does, it changes the current ordinance, only allows ambulance service to have paramedic service, ALS, Advanced Life Support Services. This amendment would allow, for certain calls, we know it's not a critical emergency, and we know that that can be tended to through an EMT that's not a certified paramedic. And this would allow that to happen, and we have to amend the ordinance to allow that. And here to speak on that is Dr. Curtis Knowles from the medical office, the Chief Medical Officer Office. And after that, Jim Winham, the CEO and President of Emsa, will address a few issues.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Medical Control Board and the Office of the Medical Director. Historically, Oklahoma City has received an all ALS service, meaning there's a paramedic on every ambulance. And the benefit to that is that when you arrive, we have the highest level of care available to perform procedures, to diagnose cardiac dysrhythmias, things like that. It does create a situation where we have over-triage. Very often, you go and there's a parking lot car accident, there's somebody with, you know, "I stubbed my toe three weeks ago, and I need an ambulance to take me to the hospital." So the paramedics aren't being utilized in their fullest capacity on all calls. So we were asked to look at this from a clinical safety standpoint about potentially having a two-EMT system where we could take care of those lower-level calls. The single most important value of a paramedic is time, education, experience, and the clinical critical thinking to develop a differential diagnosis and to apply their knowledge and their training to evaluating these patients. In an ideal state, we have lots of paramedics. We have people that we can kind of pick through and get the best and the brightest and keep them and develop them into being good paramedics with lots of encounters and lots of high-acuity patients in our system, and then retain them. Have good career progression, have happiness, a good work-life balance, have the ability to make a positive difference in their community, and to have financial security. They're getting paid well for the work they do. It's not easy work being on the street all the time. However, what we know is nationally, there's a decreased number of people going into the healthcare field. We're having trouble getting nurses. We're having trouble getting paramedics. And it takes a minimum of two years currently to develop a paramedic. We're already behind. And we want the highest standard of care. We don't want minimally competent people. So the process is difficult. Other things are contributing though. It's a pandemic. We have an increased call volume. We have high wait times in the ERs, waiting for patients to be offloaded onto hospital beds, sometimes in order of five to six hours. So that's unit hours taken off the streets. So how do we address that? So many of you may know, we've been doing a non-911 BLS pilot program for a little over two years now, where EMT crews, EMT crews can take patients home after being discharged from the hospital or back to a nursing home when they don't need advanced care. In the rare instance that somebody's being moved from one hospital to another, emergency department or to a surgical suite, and they don't need equipment, then they can do that. Or a lot of times, it's going to the helipad, like an Integris Baptist, or to the airport to pick up a crew or a patient and take them onto another facility. So the intent with moving forward onto a BLS 911 system, a tiered system, would be to increase the total number of ambulances available to respond by adding personnel to ambulances, not to take away from the current ALS numbers. That stays the same. The idea is to pick out calls that are appropriate for BLS and to do that. That would require an amendment to the local ordinances. What we think benefits, on top of just having more ambulances, is the patient care experience that the EMT gets and the likelihood that that EMT stays in the system and progresses onto paramedic, because now they're getting to actually perform some care along the way. So OMD was asked by Emsa to review the clinical safety. So we focused solely on the clinical aspect and what we could do and continue to provide safe, quality clinical care for the patient. What we did is, we actually took the MPDS, the Medical Priority Dispatch Codes. We went through each code individually, almost 2,000 codes, and said clinically, which codes would be appropriate for a BLS response? And in this system, it's mostly the alpha and omega level calls. And then we applied the data. So we have all of 2020 data. We looked at all the codes we pulled down and said, "If it's less than 1%, return to hospital with red lights and sirens," using that as a surrogate marker, that's a pretty good indicator of the severity of that patient. So for clinical year 2020, that resulted in about 22,672 calls, which is a little less than 10% of the total call volume for the year. And this is a couple examples of types of calls. So spider bite, which is most often actually a staff abscess. Nothing a paramedic's going to do or what a basic EMT would do. It's transport the patient to the hospital for an incision drainage and some antibiotics. Sometimes, my blood pressure's up, but this excludes patients with chest pain or shortness of breath. All those result in a higher level code that would not be coded down. Okay? Sick person calls. These are two of the highest calls here. Medical alarm with no patient and sick person calls. And you can see on the medical alarm, no patient found or no patient information. 88% of those patients result in no patient found or refusal. We don't transport any of them. So that's over 3,000 calls alone that we go, we don't find anybody, or we check on them like a welfare check, and they're fine. So to look at implications, we looked at 110 dispatch codes, which is about 5.6% of the total number of dispatch codes. Of those, 26,000 calls we talked about a minute ago, almost 33% resulted in patient refusals or no patient found. 66% were transported non-lights and sirens, and less than 1% were transported lights and sirens, not all with ALS interventions. Sometimes, that's a decision about where you're at, traffic, other decisions factor into that. So not all lights and sirens transports equal ALS, and not all non-lights and siren transports equal BLS. We do think there's incremental benefit in running the lower-acuity calls with BLS crews frees up ALS providers to go to the right calls at the right time without the delays. So note of caution, when we originally looked at this, a lot of systems use ALS to BLS and BLS to ALS. We only support a BLS to ALS, meaning you can upgrade a call if a BLS provider shows up on scene or dispatcher receives additional information, that call could be upgraded to a paramedic-level call. We do not support a paramedic showing up on scene and saying, "No, I think this is a BLS-level call," and calling out a BLS ambulance. Once it's assigned as an ALS call, it's an ALS call. And in the case of an ALS fire apparatus showing up, now Oklahoma City has all fire stations ALS, so a paramedic is on scene. Most of these codes exclude fire response to begin with. The few that do are limited, and the fire department actually has a secondary responsibility. It's a fire, it's a minor MBA where they're doing traffic control and safety, things like that. They're not primarily there for the medical aspect.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Winham to discuss the other details.
So as Jim's coming up, I just wanted to point out that Medical Control Board and the Office of the Medical Control Director actually sets as a separate entity, and so they're actually providing oversight for the function of both what Emsa provides in emergency care as well as what the fire department provides. What we'd asked Jim to do, so Dr. Knowles talking about how the Medical Control Board looked at this, what we asked Jim to do is just give us the idea and help us understand how operationally this would be implemented. And so we'll let Jim speak to that, and then both of them will be available for questions if we have that.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Next slide, please. Like Dr. Knowles was just talking about, we want to expand our ALS or paramedic company availability in the system. And one way of doing this is looking at this BLS program to free him up, which he just spoke about. Currently, our situation is that we've seen almost an 8% increase in requests for calls. And I've got a graph here that shows the top one, the green, is current month-to-date, or excuse me, up through September and the last five years. So we're seeing that increase. We've just noticed within the last two weeks, a little decrease, but we're still trending up, but not as fast as we were before. A pool of available paramedics nationwide is just not there. The schools have seen decreases in people wanting to go to paramedic school. There, in healthcare in general, there is a lack of people wanting to get into healthcare, nursing, paramedic, et cetera. How we're countering that is we're offering our own paramedic schools in-house. So we hire an EMT. We train that EMT. We just started that program, and we'll kick that off in January. And our current incumbent EMTs are given the opportunity to get paid while they go to school. And we're going to increase the schools that we're doing. We may even have up to three simultaneously. So we have one halftime Monday and Tuesday, another one Thursday and Friday, and then we're looking at the possibility of an 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM full-time school and pay them so we can get these paramedics out in conjunction with our nationwide recruiting campaign that's going on. This is, again, it's not just Oklahoma. It's not regional. It's not local. It is national. Many of the other EMS systems around the United States are seeing the exact same issues that we are here in Oklahoma. Also fighting the consistent delays that we're having in hospitals because they are just packed, wall time, waiting to transfer that patient off to the hospital. As Dr. Knowles pointed out, five to six hours. Sometimes, our average is at least 90 minutes, and sometimes it's longer. Sometimes, it can be in 20 minutes. And that increases our ability to get the trucks back onto the street. In addition to that, they're not where they're supposed to be. We're not in fixed stations like Oklahoma City Fire is. They have to protect the environment. They have to protect buildings, et cetera. We just protect the people, so we move to where the people are, and that changes every hour of the day and every day of the week. So our posts, you may see us at an on cue or a 7-Eleven. Our posts are not at a hospital. Say, "We are bed delayed, and we need to be at Britain and Broadway, for example, for our next call." And then we're coming out of St. Anthony's, or we're coming out of a downtown hospital, OU Baptist, or something along those lines. So that all adds up. In addition, we do have the COVID that's going on, and there's some decontamination processes that need to take place, minimally 20 minutes just to air that ambulance out and to clean it out before we get to the next patient. So as deployment for these BLS 911 units, which consist of two EMTs, is essentially the same as how we post right now. So where our ALS companies are, our data is based on all these calls. Where the next available call or where the next call is going to be anticipated, based on 20 years of data, we may sometimes have a paramedic truck and a basic life support truck very close together in that same area. And we'll use the data that we have that's been very accurate to post those ambulances up. And when we get a call, when the 911 calls, we get a screen that says this address. We will immediately start an ambulance there. And in some cases, we may start both. Now, we don't start them with red lights and sirens because that's inherently dangerous, but we are getting a head start on that. Once the information is gathered that it meets the criteria set by the Medical Control Board, for a BLS unit, we would cancel that ALS unit, keep them in service. If it needs ALS unit, we would cancel the BLS unit and keep it in service. So that's the initial way of looking at that. If we get the information quicker and faster, depending on how we get it from the caller, we'd be able to cancel quicker, but at least we have two units that are en route, and they're essentially both available until we assign one to that call. We're never going to downgrade. Safety first. A paramedic unit cannot show up on scene and say, "Hey, this meets the criteria for BLS. We're just going to call for a BLS truck and wait on them." Doesn't make sense. We will never do that. We will just transport that patient. Another quick point of that is, if we have a BLS truck and that day, we have two paramedics available without partners, we would probably take those two, we would take those two EMTs and make two ALS companies. So the goal of all of this is to increase the paramedic trucks. And requests for services that happen when a BLS truck gets on scene and says, "Hey, I need a paramedic," and we most definitely will upgrade that right away to the next available ALS truck. And we believe almost 99% of these requests for services can be completed by the BLS unit. Every one of these calls that a BLS truck actually transports or is involved with will be reviewed by our clinical staff and the Office of the Medical Director on a timeframe of at least weekly and monthly. Next slide, please. 22,672 requests, using our 2022 data, we think that we would need anywhere from five to seven BLS trucks per day. So if we went seven, that's 14 EMTs. That will change based on the day of the week. We will have the opportunity to increase that or decrease that, but that's the amount of numbers of the trucks that we would put on the street and strategically located or deployed around the city to meet the needs. And as I said, the clinical analysis will be there to ensure the program is functioning as intended. So cost figures for this, right off the bat, we have spent $40,000, $20,000 in Oklahoma City to buy a different type of monitor for these trucks instead of the $35,000 Life PAC 15 that our ALS companies have. We have an AED that was recommended by the, type was recommended by the Medical Control Board. We bought those right off the bat, so we have those. And we're anywhere around $200,000 to $250,000 we think we would lose because an ALS unit transporting a BLS call, for example, if they put a monitor on or they have to do something and it's classified as ALS, Medicare would pay us $70 more. Now, that doesn't mean we put this on just to get the extra $70. The majority of these are billed as BLS. So we think overall, we would lose around $250,000 a year, system-wide, both Oklahoma City and Tulsa, for using a BLS transport instead of ALS. And that's the right thing to do. And our return of investment would be seeing the salary decreases. The cost for a BLS truck 24 hours is significantly lower than an ALS truck as it goes forward. So our financial impact, our return of investment... So our financial impact, our return of investment in here would be much, is going to be better. So by adding 50 to 70 units of BLS hours per week, we're estimating that we will see an immediate 5% to 10% increase in compliance, and that's without changing anything else in our system as we go. And that's in conjunction with working on bed delays, increasing the paramedic numbers, but this would, right off the bat, give us anywhere from 5% to 10% increase, meaning a better response time. So we would be much closer to that 90% percentile that we need to be. So, last point I want to make is that under no circumstances do these BLS trucks take the place of a paramedic company. We are going to continue to keep the right number and get the right number of paramedic companies on the street. These BLS companies are just adjuncts. So if we need to have 30 trucks on the street, that would be 30 paramedic trucks and five additional BLS trucks. We would not take an ALS truck out of service to make a BLS truck, if that makes sense. So, thank you for your time.
And I would just add to that, that the Medical Control Board has reviewed this and made the recommendations. IMSA brought the concept forward, the Fire Chief, Chief Kelly is here and supports this, our fire department supports this as well. And so just bringing this forward is just another option to help us to provide better services and to try to help address the issues that we're facing right now with the challenges with getting paramedics.
Yeah, I just have a question, and I just appreciate the presentation. Love seeing all that data and kind of your thought process through sort of these changes. How will this impact, or will it, our 911 call center and how, like, how they dispatch things to you all? Will that change, or is it you all make the decision once it gets to you?
No, ma'am, the process of the call-taking will stay exactly the same. The only difference would be that they have another opportunity, they have another resource to dispatch. In some few cases where they're double posted, they may send two trucks and they would have to cancel one, but as far as the call taking process, no change, no increase.
But as far as those, like, different codes, are they having to know or be retrained on, like, okay, I'll send these two, or I'll just send this one? Kind of, how does that work?
No, it's, it'll pull it up as they go through. It basically tells them what resources they should be sending, so you just set that into the CAD system, and it assists the dispatcher with that. So they would identify it as a BLS level call, identify that they have a BLS crew available, and dispatch them instead of an ALS unit.
Okay, yeah, I think that's really interesting, because I think that, sort of, maybe knowingly, on y'all's part, but when I look at this, I see sort of, you know, using maybe a crisis moment as an opportunity, but truly seeing what is the best use of our resources and how we get people the right level of care. And I think in the conversation about proper mental health crisis response, this is the process we need to be going through. We need to be looking at call data, we need to be thinking about, you know, what is the actual, what resources can we create available? How many more options can we give our 911 call dispatchers to have the appropriate level of care responding to people in crisis? So I think for anyone who may be watching and hasn't been able to kind of maybe wrap their mind around what that conversation looks like, I think this is really a template for how we could be doing that. Specifically because I think historically, we've, we've looked at, and this is just like across the world, across Western culture in particular, mental illness as a personal failing, a moral failing, and we criminalize severe mental illness because we haven't really fully understood it or appreciated that it is a brain issue, and it is, there are behaviors that are associated with, with mental illness that might present as scary, but I assume some of our EMTs, you know, someone's having a heart attack or some other physical crisis, there might be symptoms that can maybe pose a potential physical danger, or blood, people bleeding is a physical danger to an EMT. So I think, you know, thinking about, really trying to shift that paradigm of a mental health crisis as a mental health crisis, not as a crime or something that, but, but sending the appropriate people with the appropriate training to assist with that level of care and whatever the acuity is. So I just, I wanted to point that out, and I was really curious kind of about that 911 piece, because I think that's what, when I've been in conversations with folks, we've struggled with on, like, well, how will our 911 operators know what to send? And so that's interesting to hear that you all are just kind of building that into the system so that they're able to just kind of have the right decision tree, essentially, of who to send and what kind of level of care. So I really appreciate all the work y'all have done. I think, I'm glad to hear that. It sounds like it'll be a more appropriate use of resources and hopefully enhance the care that people are able to get and those, lower those wait times at hospitals and all that good stuff. So, thank you.
I wanted to say first, thank you so much for your, your service and then your, your kind of creativity right now. What are you hearing from other municipalities across the country? I just pulled up, of all things, a Fox News article talking about this nationwide shortage. So I'm just curious what those conversations are like with your counterparts nationwide right now.
From, from an EMS perspective, most of the large EMS, high-performance services, we talk frequently, email, phone calls, and they, most of the 911, busy 911 systems have switched to something like this. I don't know if they've done it as safely as we've done. I can't speak to that, but they've tried this, they're using, stealing some of our ideas, actually. We've been using, and that's a credit to the city services here. Chief Kelly, the chief from Edmond, the chief from Tulsa have offered up their services. We're actually using some firefighters in the back of our trucks. They're actually doing some no, no transports. So when a patient decides they don't want to go to the hospital, they're doing some of that to help free up our ambulances. And our TAC program, which is where we have a Oklahoma City firefighter/paramedic at the hospital, will assume our stable patients and watch them so we can get back into service until they can find a bed availability in there. So some of those ideas have been used around the nation. We've stolen some of their ideas. Stolen's not a good, good word for it, but we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but we've used some of their ideas also to do this. All the same problems, it's, it's not unique regionally. I was talking to the gentleman from Richmond, Virginia, it was just a story on Fox News, that may be the one you're reading about, where an ambulance never showed up because they just didn't have the resources. Fortunately, it was a lower priority call, but, you know, five hours into it, they were just running back to back to back, and that's a very busy service up there. And it's not just one type of service. It's seen throughout for municipal, private, fire department-based, and even in Canada. Chief Kevin Smith of Niagara EMS has the exact same issues. Now, they really have some bed wait times, up to 24 hours. But it's just consistent around the nation, and a lot of it's from the COVID, and a lot of them, they just don't want to do this anymore. And our, the men and women in, at IMSA and Oklahoma City Fire, I was out briefly Friday meeting with some of them, and I, I just have to let the council know what a wonderful, wonderful job they're doing, running from call to call, staying professional, and taking care of our patients and our citizens as best they can. Sometimes they're a few minutes late, not how they want to be, but the, the clinical care that's being provided, the professionalism of both Oklahoma City Fire, Oklahoma City Police, and IMSA is just outstanding, and I got to witness that firsthand last Friday. So I want to reassure the council that the care is stupendous, and Dr. Knowles can talk more about that, too, so.
Yeah, it's the same thing. The medical directors from all these major systems communicate frequently, and there's a group called the Eagles, it's a major medical directors from all over the country, and they're having all the same problems. So it's hard to get employees, it's hard to retain people. How do you adjust and overcome the obstacles that are in front of you? And this is one of the things. And I'll say that Fort Worth is doing a similar system. We kind of looked at their stuff when we started looking at data. They're a similar kind of size system with response rates, and they've had good success with pulling some of these calls out and haven't found any major issues. With that being said, I think you guys need to understand that we've met weekly for some time now to discuss a BLS program with Edmond Fire Chief, Chief Kelly, and others, meeting to discuss, how do we adjust the system? How do we use fire paramedics? How do we change the culture and get people on board and take good care of our citizens? Because that's what it's really about.
I'm just looking at this opening paragraph and hearing what you're saying, too, and just where the American Ambulance Association President Sean Baird warned that the coronavirus pandemic took the shortage of emergency medical service workers to a, quote, "crisis" level, explaining that the problem threatens to undermine the country's 911 system and needs urgent attention by Congress. Just chronic underfunding. And I, I want to reassure you, this is why you're reassuring us, what you're saying about the pressure this is putting on our folk, I, I hear it. And I, I, it's a different capacity, but as a teacher, right now, what my students are going through navigating this, and what I feel is, it, this is, this is a lot of pressure, it's a lot of pressure, and I commend you all for operating in this, and I just need you all to know that someone up here on this horseshoe knows what you're talking about, and, and I just want to validate those experiences. And to also say, I've been thinking about this mental health conversation so much lately. I believe, as I've spoken previously from this horseshoe, that for some folk, they think of mental health as there's a person over here who has bipolar, or there's a person over here, and I think we forget, we all literally have a brain, and thus we all have emotions, and that things like this affect those emotions. And I think there are probably people right now who've never even contemplated that for themselves. They've gone and they've done this work and never paused. And so I just want to, again, reiterate, I see what you all are doing, and I hear it, and I'm just so thankful and so proud of what creativity you're bringing to this moment, and know that there's solidarity across the country, too.
I just, I know, as we were talking in our briefing, my only question that I had was to ensure that we are educating our community on this change, because that was a lot of information y'all just gave us, and for somebody just sit and watch that, that may have a question or concern and saying, okay, am I calling 911 or am I not? You know, those are some of the concerns that people will have. So I know you all have been committed to continuously making sure our neighbors and our citizens are going to be educated through this process, so I just wanted to thank you for that commitment, because while it is a somewhat minor change, in some aspects, a major change, it just depends on those citizens who maybe have never called 911 now, they will at least know what the process could become for, for their, for their loved one or for themselves. So I appreciate that.
If there's no other comments or questions, this is actually just being introduced today, set for public hearing on November 9th, final hearing November 23rd. Is there a motion to introduce it? Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us, thank you very much. This brings us to 11L. This is ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing November 9th, final hearings November 23rd. This relates to Chapter 58 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, specifically issues related to wrecker services, and we have a presentation.
Yes, Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So Chapter 58 changes that are being recommended today, and these were coordinated with the Oklahoma City Police Department with support of the Municipal Counselor's Office, do not change how we will operate actually the wrecker services, but it does change how we're going to select using the RFP process, and also how the recommendations will come to you as the council. So the way that the wrecker services works today is that the Traffic Commission has historically been involved in preparing those RFPs, making those recommendations, forming the committee, and bringing those recommendations to the council for consideration. But the Traffic Commission doesn't actually operate the wrecker service contracts. It's the Oklahoma City Police Department that utilizes those contracts directly when they're actually removing abandoned vehicles, those that are illegally parked, all those things that actually serve Oklahoma City. So the changes that are being recommended to you today is to change from the Traffic Commission preparing the RFP to the Oklahoma City Police Department preparing that RFP. It also changes the commission forming the selection committee and having the Oklahoma City Police Department making that selection committee. It also changes the recommendations to the council from the Traffic Commission to having the Chief of Police make those recommendations to the council. So you're going to see the same recommendations, it's just going to come from a different body. And it's going to allow the Oklahoma City Police Department to fully manage the process that they're already operating now. So today is just the introduction. It is scheduled for a public hearing in two weeks and then a final. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the item.
Any questions? All right, well, this again is just to introduce it today. Is there a motion to do that? Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, items M and N were deferred without objection at the beginning of the meeting till November 9th, which brings us to item O. O1 and 2 are related, and O1 is a public hearing regarding a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving an allocation from Increment District Number 2. Has anyone signed up to speak, Amy?
No, they haven't.
So we'll close the public hearing and move to O2. A joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving an allocation in an amount not to exceed $5 million from Increment District Number 2, et cetera. This was, this addresses Oklahoma County Capital Needs Project. You might recall Treasurer Freeman and others being here last meeting. This was presented on last meeting. There's no presentation scheduled today. The council can take up final passage of the joint resolution if it so desires.
While you're taking the vote, too, I'll just point out that the item before that we had on, on the allocation for the Harmony Project, we will see that again on this item in addition to the concurrence item we'll see on the EDA, so we'll see that one next week. So it'll come like this.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. All right, 11P. This is a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a general and a runoff election in the City of OKC. That's the new terminology from the charter changes last year. For the purpose of electing the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, sets the election, general election is February 8th, runoff if needed as April 5th, filing period is December 6th, 7th, and 8th. And there's no presentation, just, got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11Q1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Taylor Deaton while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11R1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Brandon Fletcher while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11S1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Russell Moreland while he continues to require rehab. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11T1, resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Michael Thomas Smith v. City of OKC. Staff is not requested an executive session. We have a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11U1, claim recommended for denial. There's one. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11V1, claims recommended for approval. Items A through- Items A through C, executive session is not requested. Got a motion and a second? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, Item 12, comments from council. Ward 1.
I got to be a part of the Alzheimer's Walk to Remember this past weekend down at Scissor Tale Park, and I just wanted to commend their professionalism and everything that they brought and with the recognition that they did, but also for the way their volunteers cleaned that park up so quickly. I mean, they kept everything done immaculate. We got to walk by City Hall, we got to kind of go through the entire downtown. It was just a really, really good time to spend with everybody, and really appreciated Mike Morgan from News Channel 4 and his wife coming out to emcee the event and see everyone through. It was amazing to me, the different schools and the cheerleaders and whatnot that came out to really cheer everybody on. We had Yukon High School, Piedmont. We even had Oklahoma City University out, you know, going on. So I was really impressed to see how many people were there, and just wanted to thank them for inviting us out and having a wonderful time.
Thank you. Ward 2.
Thank you. First, I wanted to say thank you to Keith Kelly and those who put together the commemoration for those who have fallen during their time of service with Oklahoma City Police Department, or sorry, excuse me, Oklahoma City Fire Department. It was an honor to attend a very just beautiful service, and I'm very thankful that our city takes its time to go back to its earliest days and honors person by person we've lost in, well, in service of protecting us. So that's one thing I wanted to say. And then, since Halloween is coming up, there are a couple of things I wanted to note. I think I've said this previously from this horseshoe, but tis the season. For me, when I think of one of the scariest things that could possibly ever happen in all of humanity, I think about 500 years ago in Germany, when Martin Luther decides to translate the Bible from Latin into German for the very first time. And this is 1517, and when he does this, right, he's very confused because the priest and the pope at the time have told everybody, if you recall this story, and I do, that to go to heaven, one has to pay what are called indulgences, right? Your salvation is paying your way into heaven. And you couldn't question it at the time, right? There was a hierarchy all across Europe where the pope knew all. The pope existed in their position because God placed them there. The pope then empowered a king and a queen to rule different parts of Western Europe. And then you had a very small group of people, lords, who controlled the land. You might find that language interesting. And then you have the knights who protected them, protected the land. And then there was everybody else, like literally everybody else. So you had this very small group of people, and then everybody else. And then what Martin did, when he looked line by line translating the Bible from Latin into his native language, German, he realized, whoopsie doopsie, this indulgence thing is not in the Bible. It's not in there. And I want you to try and think about how terrifying, scary, I said, tis the season, how scary it must have been for that man in that moment to know because of what he's reading what the truth is. But also know he can't question it, because if he does, if he questions the pope, he's for all intents and purposes questioning God. You ain't doing that back then. One of his counterparts over in England, William Tyndall, you might remember, does something very similar when he translates the Bible from Latin into English. And his reward for that is the church accuses him of heresy, right? You can't change the Bible from its Latin. That's going against God, they argued. And his punishment was they burned him alive and strangled him, right? At once. I don't, this is a really double punishment in this moment. So Martin Luther's face, that's a big moment for him to do what he does, when he says, you know what? I'm going to go line by line and make a case. I'm going to prove I'm right. The 95 feces. And that was the only way he could make his argument, was he had to go to the source itself, right? Post them on All Hallows' Eve. I'd said, tis the season, right? He did it in the, this weekend is the anniversary of that. How scary that must have been for him. But even scarier for the people who would read his words and realize he has cited his evidence and he's right. And this leads to the church splitting, as we know, between Protestants and Catholics, the Protestant Reformation. We will protest what has been happening, the fact that the church is using all this money to enrich itself and not help the poor, which Jesus spoke quite a bit about, if I recall. Now the followers of that book have to figure out what to do next. What are their ethics? What are their values? Has, if the pope's been lying, what else, what is truth then, right? That's a scary thing to have to sit there and now go, what is reality? And I think of that moment and how incredible it must have been for the people who said, I will endure, right? I will, what I will do, and this is such a moment in human, the human story, is not only could you not translate the Bible, you couldn't read it. Most of those people, the majority of Europeans were illiterate and purposely kept illiterate. So they couldn't even read what was in their book. And worse, they couldn't even read the stories that had come before. So the Iliad, the Odyssey, Gilgamesh, you name it, they don't even have knowledge of it, right? That's what the Italian Renaissance was, coming out of that. It was a rebirth, not just of arts, which we loved hearing earlier, arts. We heard what role the arts play. We heard what role the humanities play. But a Renaissance is not just a rebirth of art, it is a rebirth of knowledge. It was the Europeans saying, what did the ancient Greeks do? Oh, they invented democracy. We have the Olympics. We have philosophy. That's what started happening in the 15, 16, 17, and 1800s, was a rebirth of knowledge and building on previous knowledge. I mention it today because I am deeply concerned when I look at stuff like the metro literacy coalition, and I look at the youth literacy rate, and I see that the percent of eighth graders scoring proficient or above across our state, it was 26% in 2007, 28% in 2017. I'm really worried about the reading levels for our students. I can assure you right now, having spoken with my students at UCO and OCU, many of them are struggling even to read a more journalistic book like Boomtown. They struggle. They even use words like afraid. They feel intimidated. And I just worry, we've not learned the lessons from 500 years ago about empowering people to read for themselves and then think for themselves, and come to their own conclusions about how to navigate reality. And then this spills over into adult illiteracy. I am very worried about where we are right now, and I'm especially worried when I ran into a former student of mine from middle school, from, I taught middle school, and they are a former student from that world, who's working a minimum wage job right now. And I ran into them at their work, and they tell me, I'm putting off college right now because the virtual way in which we're teaching just is, they don't think they're going to get enough from it. And I understand, but that's also very frightening, right? The longer someone stays out of that college world, the harder it is to reenter it, particularly once they start having a family. So I'm just really worried about this, and I wanted to bring attention to it. So again, I think one of the scariest moments we've ever had was realizing, oh my gosh, look at the level at which people in power haven't been telling us the truth. And I think one of the most resilient moments we ever had was when many of those people said, well, then let's get to studying, huh? And I think we're in another moment like that. For a city that keeps saying it's in a Renaissance, my challenge remains. It is not just about the buildings we build, it is not just about the art we paint and sculpt. It ultimately must be a rebirth of knowledge, a rebirth of who we are and understanding of who we are. And that starts with, I wish David Greenwell was here right now. That does in fact start with what he and Councilwoman Nice were saying earlier, better access to libraries, better access to reading tools for young parents, and better access at three and four years old for kids in preschool. That is critical, and it needs to become more of a priority. And I would hope, I would hope, as we move through the next 10 years of implementing MAPs, we take advantage of in our youth centers, et cetera, to truly have a Renaissance when it comes to literacy and education. If we don't, if we don't.
Okay. Thank you. Ward 3.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the resolution for Arts Humanities Month, I'd just like to give a shout out to all the marching bands in the metro area, many of which have already competed in the Oklahoma Band Masters Association contests for their classes. We've got a lot of schools in the metro area that'll be traveling to Broken Arrow this weekend for the six-day class competitions, being Putnam City North, Westmore, Mustang, Yukon, Deer Creek, Southmore, Moore, PCU West, and all of the Edmund Schools traveling up this weekend. So good luck to them. If you've never witnessed a marching band contest, they're quite entertaining, and the coordination that these kids put together as they practice separately is really phenomenal. And I'm biased 100%. So Mustang came back, sixth place out of our superregional contest in St. Louis this weekend, and just the change that it has made in my own son's life, being a part of the marching band and the relationships there. I would encourage any parent to encourage their children to participate in band, whether it's marching or otherwise, for the relationships and the teamwork that comes out of that. So very proud of all of the kids who have participated so far and who are participating this weekend. So that's all I've got this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 4.
Ward 6. Ward 7. Got too fast.
I was trying to take my sip. I was, we were actually just talking about the marching bands, so that's exciting, and we were, she mentioned Langston and Langston University having Lizzo, the artist Lizzo, with her. So I'll just say, Homecoming was a success. We had our gala the day before Homecoming on that Saturday, and the scholarship gala, I don't think I've ever attended where we've raised that amount of money. It's almost a million dollars or more. I know overall, it was probably over a million, but just people so generous for the students to say, you matter, your education matters, and this HBCU that's in Oklahoma matters. So that was really fun to be a part of that evening and that day, and also participating the next day. And one of the things that I will commend them on, as we are still experiencing a global pandemic, is the fact that this university, that President Smith mentioned the fact and bragged, and I think it's worthy to be noted, that they have not had a positive or a case as far as COVID is concerned at this university, because they have been taking the protocols that they need for their students to be safe. So I think that speaks volumes for a college to say they have not had any cases of COVID, and they've been able to keep the university safe in that aspect. So again, kudos to the leadership and those teachers, and also those students who care enough for each other to stay safe during this timeframe. I want to say, I know we've had the opening of the airport expansion, and I chuckle because it's beautiful, and I saw the pictures that people have posted, even the mayor, when you were there and you posted your pictures. But I had no idea that I would have to walk all the way down to the end to go through, to get checked in as far as the security checkpoint, because I haven't traveled pre-COVID. So I'm used to going my little lane in the front, in the middle, because I know that's the shortcut, and I had to go all the way down to the end. I was like, oh, now we are, we are like, like big time, where you have to go all the way down to the end and wait in line, you know? But that was a good hustle and bustle, so I just had to chuckle as I was walking through that line, because I got lost twice. And it's not big enough to get lost, but I was like, where am I going? But that was just exciting. But the other piece of my excitement was to see between gates 16 and 13, SNU has, they have these billboards of their graduates, and one of those young ladies is from Northeast Oklahoma City, she has three daughters, and her picture is humongous, and it speaks volumes to even her being committed to the process of continuing her education as she cares for her daughters. And she is a Girl Scout troop leader in Northeast Oklahoma City. And so to see her huge smile and to know the story behind that smile, and to see it smack dab in the middle of our airport is beautiful. So Ms. Carmen, I just want to say congratulations, and she is now a famous young lady, so you see her everywhere you go. I was just walking down, and then I looked up, and I looked up again, and I said, oh my goodness! And I took a picture and sent it to her, and she said, she gets excited, because I guess everybody that knows her, when they see that, they all send pictures. So she's seen it from all different angles of what that looks like from that airport. But again, this speaks to just the transition and even the diversity of our airport and the things that we're doing collectively for Oklahoma City. And that takes me into my Peer City trip that we went to Denver for, and clearly their airport is nothing like ours. It is a whole different ballgame pertaining to even the length of travel you have to go to get anywhere from that airport. And that was my first time ever traveling outside of the airport of Denver. And I want to thank you all live for the opportunity to go on that Peer City trip and actually see the things that are happening as far as development, to see the hands that have been a part of that development, and also really just get a hands-on view of what have been the difficulties in them developing these spaces that they have, because they built on a lot of city public, public areas that were parking lots. You know, that's how big they have started to become in being intentional about how they grow and where they build. But at the same time, it was unfortunate because you did see a lot of homelessness. So there's always caveats to things that we're doing, and I look and see that, because as a city, we're on the verge of a lot of great things that are coming, and we know they are. And it's how we care about everyone in that process is how I hope we will all be looking forward in that process as well. And I got to see, I want to just also commend Greater Mount Carmel for 76 years. I happened to be there, and then, what a surprise, the mayor walks in, too, in this church to celebrate. And the pastor, the interim pastor, is actually Senator George Young. So it's really cool to see Senator Young, but also commend the work that Pastor Free, who had pastored there for many years, who recently passed away within the last six months, his dedication to our community and to our city as well. Homeland, if you have not seen the beautiful art, it is up on the sides of the building on 36 and Lincoln. Carlos Barboza interrupted his work last night, because I was just like, what are you doing? And he allowed me to just be a part of his space and showed me how he grids his art and what he does, and it was beautiful to see. So we have one more piece that's coming up, and you'll be able to really get a glimpse of the commitment to the community as far as that piece of art is concerned. And I'll have pictures. I was there to take pictures, because we'll have our Northeast Community Meeting tonight. So I hope if you are able to come, all of those, 6 o'clock at the Page Woodson. So it's not at Douglas High School, it's at the old Douglas High School on 6th and High, and we'll be talking about oncoming projects and also resources that we have to talk about in our community. So looking forward to meeting folks safely, and there is an option to look at Facebook Live on Nikki Nice OKC if you are unable to attend, because we, clearly, again, we are still in the process of keeping ourselves safe, so I don't want people to compromise themselves if they don't have. themselves if they don't have to. There is another option, and we'll record it and figure out how we can make sure people can get their questions answered. So wanted to make sure we had those opportunities, and we do recommend everyone wear their mask for this event as well, so I just wanted to make sure I mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward 8.
I was so excited to read about the Chickasaw Nation's decision to go forward with the $300 million resort development in Oklahoma City. This is great news, it's great economic impact news, and I agree with Bill Lance, the Secretary of Commerce for the Chickasaw Nation, where he says this is already going to, this is also going to add to all the exciting stuff that's already occurring in Oklahoma City, but it's also going to add 400 new employees and an annualized economic year one impact of $97 million. So my hat's off to them, thank you for investing in Oklahoma City, thank you for helping us to continue to transform the Oklahoma River. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know Bill and the Governor, Annatueby, and the whole nation are very grateful to this council for their partnership on that project. The TIF that this council passed a few months ago really makes that possible, and they know that, and they're very grateful for the partnership they have with us. Okay, that concludes item 12. Item 13 is citizens to be heard. We have no one who's signed up to speak, which brings us to item 14, and we are adjourned.